Okay, I see you online, Nick. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
I have 6:00 PM and I would like to call this City Council meeting to order on this date, October 12, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Will you all stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's interesting how we all have our own cadence when we say that. Moving into roll call, so I'll begin online and I see you online, Nick, Councilman Lavaca, thank you. Councilman Owen has been asked to be excused. He is out for the evening, as is Councilman Allen. So, moving on to Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
All right. And I want to make known before we move through the consent agenda and the agenda that we are going to have a closed session after the meeting, and Chief Lyman will be joining us during that, so keep that in mind, bear that in mind, when approving the agenda. So I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin and a second by Councilman Burns. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, moving on to the consent agenda, items one through seven. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, second by Councilwoman Kestie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, well, tonight we have two presentations, which is really quite exciting. The first is going to be from Robert Stanley, I almost said Bob, and he is with United General Hospital Peace Health, and he's going to share a little bit of history with us, and I see that he has brought others with him as well. So, do you want to introduce him when you get up to the...
Yeah.
Okay, come on up. And, Robert, there's a button and it should be blue. If it's blue, the mic is on. If it's not blue, you need to turn it on.
Okay, the mic is on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyway, I'm Robert Stanley, and I'm a Commissioner 105 for District 304. And one of the things we do, and it's your district and it's your hospital, I just try to represent you as best I can. But anyway, I'm not an expert on this stuff. I am from out of town, but I don't have any slides, so that eliminates me from being an expert. But anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, United General Hospital, Peace Health, has been there since 1965, and it's kind of, you know, 1965, but it's a low mileage. And the administration of the hospital and the district made a commitment a long time ago that if we're going to do something, we're going to do it well with the best equipment or we're not going to do it. And we've continued to do that. We formed an alliance with Peace Health six years ago because we couldn't get specialists. We couldn't get... We had family physicians and primary care people, but we didn't have specialists, so extremely hard to get. So we went to Peace Health to ask them if we could share some of their specialists so that we could continue to practice medicine in the current era. And they said, "Well," we talked, you know, several times about lots of things, and eventually they said, "Why don't you become one of our hospitals?" So we said, "Sure." And as it's turned out, it's been one of the best things that's ever happened to our district. We have about 70,000 people in our district, and we are affiliated with a hospital that's over 100 years old, is a 500-bed tertiary facility 30 minutes away, and we couldn't have it any better. And just for your confidence, the hospital and the district is thriving and doing very well. We have all the specialties. In the future, we're thinking about doing pediatrics and also female health. So, anyway, I don't know if you folks have this handout that, if you need one.
Do we have enough to maybe?
Yes.
Anyway, this is, these are the, these are like 26 of the programs that we do as a district. The hospital is just one of the programs. In addition to that, we also do, we're also a 50% partner in hospice of Skagit Valley, along with Skagit Valley Hospital. Anyway, these are, these are the 26 of the programs, plus the hospital, in addition to that, plus hospice that we do. And Carol Hawke is our chief operating officer, and Carol knows a lot about these programs, and her and her teams kind of administer and carry out that. So I'm going to have Carol Hawke do the talking. And then toward the end, I want to just talk about one other thing that involves maybe something the council can do to kind of help our community.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carol Hawke, and I'm the chief operating officer. Thank you so much, Commissioner Stanley, for sharing the highlights. So, just to be clear, Peace Health has come in since 2016 to handle all the medical and clinical services. So what is Hospital District 304 really focusing on? Yes, we are still responsible for the facilities, and yes, we're co-owners of the hospice of the Northwest, but we really are focusing on our mission of building healthier communities. And what does that mean? Well, I think Commissioner Stanley gave you your cheat sheet, so I'm not, I wish I had a lot of time and 25 slides to go over everything we do, because we have over 50 different programs. And most of our programs are grant-funded, so we've been really fortunate to partner with people in our region, in the state, to do a lot of different work. So, just quick highlights, I have our six pillars, so stewarding assets and opportunities. I'm going to go over like three of them, then I brought some team members to talk about the other two. So, as Commissioner Stanley was saying, we do have stewarding assets and opportunities, so we're responsible for the facilities. We're also owners of the hospice of the Northwest. We do have a foundation, so we're actually able to apply for grants with a 501(c)(3). In addition, we have our Active Living Pillar, so some of you are familiar with our fitness center. Hopefully, some of you have done Trek for Treasure. Anybody? Trek for Treasure? Okay, great. We also partner with Skagit Trail Builders. They've done a lot of work in the Cedar Wully community in building trails. We also have worksite wellness programming and yoga and Nature RX. We're trying to get families out in nature and hiking and mental health. So that's a kind of highlight for our Active Living Pillar. We also focus on healthy eating. It's very important to us that we look at making sure that there's food insecurity issues that we provide supplemental. So we have basic food, which we help people who do need some assistance, so apply for that. We also have farm-to-school happening here in Cedar Wully, as well as in Concrete, and we're moving into Burlington. Another big program that we have recently is the Fruit and Veggie RX, and where we're giving people a dollar per day, per household member, to buy fruits and veggies, but we're also doing some education around that. And we're working on, I think we have 175 people in that program in our, in our community. So that's another big highlight. And again, these are such high level, and I wish I had like the whole day to explain everything, so I'm just going to go over quickly on some of these, and then maybe someday we'll get to come back and go more in-depth on some of the programs. We also look at harvest of the month. When we're working with the schools, it's important to look at what's happening in the cafeteria for procurement, what's happening in the community around gardens, but also what is happening for kids in the cafeteria, like how to try new foods in the classrooms. We look at trying to incorporate healthy eating but into the STEM and learning, and how to have kids participate in the school gardens to see their food grow, but also have it go in the cafeteria and see it at their lunches. That's a little bit about healthy eating. And another pillar, there won't be a Chris, is our thriving children and families. And we're looking at that pillar of looking at preconception all the way to about age eight. So that's looking at early childhood programs. We know it's really important those first four years of the child's life to really do some really early initiatives. So we have Help Me Grow program, which is a resource for families who are, being a parent is hard no matter what your socioeconomic status is. So we're really trying to look at resources and making sure people have access to that. And we also have three WIC clinics here within our district. So we have a Cedar Wully clinic, one in Stanwood area, and one up in Concrete. So that's, again, high level of those four pillars. And I'm going to introduce a couple other staff that came today that are going to talk about more specific programs for Cedar Wully. So I'm going to introduce one of our newest employees, and this is not hazing, Jill, Jill Sprouse. She is our new supervisor for the Engage Youth and Communities, and she's going to give a quick highlight about Cedar Wully Rise.
Hi, everybody. I am Jill Sprouse. I've been in my job for about a month, so, you know, really happy to meet you. One of the great things I get to do in my job is to be the co-coordinator of the Cedar Wully Rise Coalition with Chief Dan as our president, so I'm sure you know lots about it. One of the things that this coalition is doing is bringing together all aspects of our community: youth parents, law enforcement, civic groups, business, healthcare, media, schools, all with the goal of enriching the lives of youth in our community. And it's a vibrant group that really has some great goals. And one of the things, I have 10 things on my list, I'm not going to share all 10 with them, of them with you, but one of the things that I wanted to highlight is we have our Drug Takeback Day, and Cedar Wully is the only one in the county that's doing a wellness fair as well. Oftentimes, we will have community competitions with Drug Takeback Day, and this year we win because we have a wellness event. So I brought some flyers. I'm just going to have you guys pass them down. If you can post them, share them, that would be great. So that's an event that we have coming up. We also have Parent University at the high school coming up, and that is going to be an opportunity for parents to get education and information regarding drug, alcohol, and cannabis use and tobacco use in their, with their kids. And we're going to have a panel of experts there. We also have our peer-to-peer education program that we're starting for the fall, and that's where we educate peers to talk to their peers about tobacco and cannabis use. And so that's going to start. And there's also Wish Club at Cedar Wully High School. And Wish Club is all about prevention, and it's students who are taking a lead in their schools in prevention. And just one more thing, we have a survey that we need Cedar Wully people to fill out, and we need 30 more. That's it, just 30. So I'm going to pass these out. Just take your phone, get the QR code, fill out the survey, so we can get data, real-life data on Cedar Wully families and parents and what they, what's important to them and what their perceptions are. So I want to thank you so much for letting me talk with you for just a little bit, and I'm excited for the next year with you all. Okay.
Thank you. I'm not sure where we're at on our time limit, but last but not least, I'm going to introduce you to Beth Ruth. She's our supervisor with our Community and Professional Education, which is really our big niche, and she's going to talk a little bit about some programs and trainings that are coming up.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Ruth, and I'm a Certified Health Education Specialist. I've been working for United General District 304 for about five and a half years now, and I'm really pleased to move into a role as the supervisor of the Community and Professional Education pillar, because lifelong learning is a value for Hospital District 304, and we are so proud to offer many like free and low-cost programs to our community, things like parenting programs for parents of, from babies all the way through teens, which the teen years can be quite challenging with some of the things that Jill just mentioned, so helping to reduce youth substance use and to improve mental health. We also offer professional development, so training for folks who work with youth or for people in the community who would like to bring things back to their organization and the folks that they serve. We also offer health and safety programs, so we train people in CPR, AED, and first aid. And recently, I have been offering free overdose response training to the community multiple times a month because the opioid crisis is, has affected all aspects of our community, and I think it's incredibly important that any person knows how to recognize and respond effectively to an opioid overdose crisis. And I teach people how to utilize the medication naloxone, also known as Narcan, which can help temporarily reverse an opioid overdose. And I actually have medication to offer to the community at no cost. So it's my hope to get those medicines out into the community so that they are there when and if people need them. And the last thing I'd like to share is that mental health promotion and suicide prevention is a personal passion of mine and something that I've been really fortunate to have District 304 support. I offer Question, Persuade, Refer Suicide Prevention Trainings. It's a short online training for anyone age 16 and over to help recognize when someone is in crisis and ask the direct question about suicide, which has been shown to help prevent suicide. I also teach mental health first aid. I have been pleased to partner with agencies to offer it to their staff and then to community members who are interested in understanding how to better support folks who are going through hard times and help prevent, you know, loss of life through suicide, but also just greater harms down the line. So, those are a few of the things that we focus on, and if you've never been to our website, unitedgeneral.org, it covers all the things that we've talked about and more, and has signups for all of the wonderful programs that we have. So, thank you for your time, and I will invite Commissioner Stanley back up to close us out.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. And I want to note, you guys know too, I'm very biased too about that hospital. Not only are we one of Peace Health's 10 hospitals, we're the best one with the numbers, and that's just the numbers. You know, we haven't had any hospital-acquired infections, and it goes on and on and on because, you know, and we're the second-largest employer in this district, behind the school district. So, we employ over 400 people, so we're, want to be a very big part of this community. So in closing, one of my personal, with regard to mental health, we always, you know, the homeless crisis is a crisis nationwide, and we don't ever think about, you know, why is it? We think about building more buildings and treating more overdoses, but we don't ever start to talk about what's causing it. And one of the big causes of mental health issues, which a lot of people have on the street, is that insurance companies discriminate against it. They don't discriminate against, against, you know, pre-existing conditions. They treat heart attacks, they treat pneumonia, but they don't treat mental illness. And when they do, they do it at a reduced cost, so there's no providers. There's nobody doing that. We closed a unit that we had because we were losing over $200,000 a month and taking care of people that weren't even in our district. But anyway, somehow, what I've done with the hospital groups like Peace Health and University of Washington Physicians and Providence is, I'm trying to get them to form a group where they say, "Insurance companies, knock it off. Quit discriminating against mental health." These people don't have any place to go except for law enforcement or emergency rooms, and then they're just turned right back on the street. So nobody gets any help. It continues to get worse, and we put in more treatment centers and overdoses, but, but if, if these people had places to go, just like when they, you know, they closed Northern State 40 years ago, that was more people dumped in this town that were mentally ill than lived here. And they wonder why we have problems. Well, I think that city councils, you know, if they could get together with other city councils and other county commissioners, and just, just talking about it and forming even a task force makes action happen. But these insurance companies are doing just fine, and they want to collect all the premiums, but they don't want to pay for things. And they make you go through all kinds of, you know, authorizations and all kinds of things. But in mental health, they just flat discriminate against it. And it's part of the problem. These people have no place to go, no help, and I don't know, I've never spent a night on the street, but I'd probably be on drugs before the night was over, just because it's such a tough way to live. So I'd like to ask the council any way you can, whether it's with other councils, let's, let's just start saying, "Knock it off, insurance companies. Start treating mental health." It's one of our biggest problems in all our cities, and it's costing us lots and lots of lives and, and money. So that's my spiel, and thank you for your time, and I hope you never have to use this on the prevention.
One moment, Robert, one moment before you go. Are there any questions from the council to either Carol, Jill, Elizabeth, or Robert? Yeah?
Thank you, guys, for their presentation. It's been helpful to understand. I'm kind of curious, what are the numbers in like participation in like some of your parenting classes in Rise?
I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. So, you know, it depends, basically. We do have certain grants that help us focus on particular communities at different times. So, we generally have between two to six families in any of our classes. I think a smaller class size is actually helpful because they bond to each other, they bond to the facilitators and instructors. But I would love to see more families joining in than any of those programs, especially because many of them are offered at no cost and supported by the grants that we have. So if any of you are able to help bring people to our website, help them to understand that these programs are available, and increase the numbers, I would really appreciate your support. For our other trainings, I think we've been having five to eight people for each of the overdose response trainings I've been offering a few times a month. And for mental health first aid, I trained 18 people two weeks ago. So, I think you can put as many opportunities as you want out there, but people are busy. Zoom fatigue was real during the pandemic, so now we're able to offer either hybrid or in-person learning again, which is incredibly valuable. So, does that answer?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, you asked, you mentioned CPR training earlier. Could you elaborate on how often you do those programs, or?
Yeah. We have an American Red Cross certified instructor who offers the CPR, AED first aid course at least once a month. We are actually in the process of having a multilingual person trained to offer the CPR, AED first aid as well, because we've heard from the Spanish-speaking members of our community that there really is no options for them to receive that certification, which is often needed for employment or for volunteering, things like that. So, we, after that person is trained to deliver the program, then we will hope to offer them more frequently. And we do offer a sliding scale fee for that course because we want to make sure that price is not a barrier for people to take part in it.
Thank you very much, all, for your time.
Yeah.
Anyone else? So I have to say to you...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes. Go ahead, Nick.
Oh, I was just going to ask, over here on the screen, I was just going to ask, how do people find out about those classes? You may have mentioned it, but I didn't, I might not have caught it.
Yeah. Is it helpful for me to talk into the microphone and not look at them?
Yes.
Okay, great. So people find out about them through social media. They find out about them through things like the Cedar Wully Rise Coalition. We have extensive networks throughout Skagit County of folks, and so we make sure that we are having that direct connection. For example, we have an incredible years program for parents of kids age one to four coming up at the end of October, and we're working with our local Head Starts and the Children's Council to make sure that families are getting this information, however it's going to work for them. We've also been really pleased with any time we've worked with Skagit Kid Insider, which I feel like is a hub in our community for parents to know what's going on and advertise on their site. And so, yeah, there's lots of different ways, but I think when you have that one-to-one connection, so if you were like, you know, "Do you know that they offer these free classes for parents of toddlers?" That type of direction is, makes it more likely for people to sign up.
And you do have, on your website, there's a place for people to sign up, so you can get the information and then disseminate it.
Absolutely, yes.
Other communities you're in. Well, I have to say that United General is a hospital that really is both the, you're looking after both the physical and the mental health of the community, and I know that you do reach as far as Concrete. You have arms that stretch out, and you reach all age groups. It's really impressive, the programs that you have going on. I did have one quick question, and actually, this is from, for Carol. I know you made mention that the children ages one through four, and this is, this is just probably yes or no, so I don't want to have to, but I'm wondering, do you guys work with United, United Way regarding that? You do, okay.
They're strong partners with United Way. They actually help us out of a position for us with Lyndy Simmons, so we're very active members of the Children's Council. So a lot of coalitions, even though it's a part of, you know, 20, 25 different organizations, we are kind of sometimes a catalyst behind the scenes by hiring the staff, looking for grants, looking at evidence-based programs, looking at the data, unmet needs. So we do a lot of behind-the-scenes to make things happen. We're, I think, we worked with Chief Dan there to get a grant from Cedar Wully Community that DFC grants, a 10-year grant, $125,000 a year. So a lot of times we're out there looking for funding and resources. We recently partnered with Skagit County Public Health to look for additional dollars for the stabilization center to extend that, extend that bed. So, we do a lot of things. Sometimes people are like, "Oh..."
Or behind the scenes.
Yes, but also we are looking at really leveraging resources to help our community.
Well, it's very impactful. Thank you very much. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Robert, for bringing this forward and...
I might add that, you know, your tax dollars are not paying for all this. We don't get enough tax dollars to even pay for the uncompensated care, but Carol and her teams generate a couple million dollars in grants, you know, that fund all our programs. So, as taxpayers, we're really getting a benefit by having a peace health organization in United General District 304 in your district, so.
Very much so. Well, thank you. Thank you again. We appreciate the information. All right, have a good evening. Okay, moving on to our second presentation. It is a Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Above and Beyond Award. So, John Van Daleen. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Van Daleen. I live in Everett. I have been, I'm a volunteer for the Employer Support of the Guard Reserve. Our organization was put together 50 years ago when the draft was eliminated, and it caused employers' heartburn when their National Guard reservists left town. And so they've created the Uniform Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, which both the employer and the employees who are active National Guard and reservists must comply to. My job is twofold. One is that we help mediate between the employer and the employee to make sure that nothing happens. We had a recent one where there was a weight issue. A friend of mine who was active guard or active reserve, he had an issue with his 401K. And so these things we mediate, and that's all we can do. If it has to go further, it does go to the Department of Labor, because they can actually open up a case and investigate it. The other half of our job is the award system. There are seven. Our, our website is www.esgr.mil, and it is open to the public, and it has quite a bit of information of who we are and what we do. There is approximately 2,700 of us around the country, plus Guam and Puerto Rico, and we're all doing basically the same, same thing. The award function, typically, there's, the first one is for an individual. And we would, the guard or reserve person would put, put their boss essentially in for the award. The next one up is, it was written so well that the police chief and the police department do, does so well with the Guard and Reserve members of the police force, and I understand the city does too, that this Above and Beyond Award was written up by Brian Hall and ultimately hit my desk. And I don't know if you can all see this. This will go to the chief to be somewhere put in the, the camera's up there, into his office. And, Chief? And Brian? And my photographer. I present this to the department, and thank you very much for your effort to, with the Guard and Reserve, because it's important that they come back from their duties, they get their job back, they get their bonus or their benefits and everything, yet you have obligations to work around them and are happy to see them come back. I understand that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. My longest deployment when I was in the Reserve was three weeks, so it wasn't really a big deal. A friend of mine just got back, well, before the war in Ukraine, he had just gotten back from Ukraine, so after a year and a quarter, so. from Ukraine, so after a year and a quarter, so it becomes, okay. So I present this to the department.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And photographer, where's our photographer? Oh, there he is. Oh. And Brian? Thank you, sir.
He's also in our service.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Sir?
You good?
Yeah.
I guess I just want to add, just thanks to our reservists, right? We've got Officer Cates and Officer Brian Hall. Officer Cates is in the Coast Guard Reserve, and Brian Hall is in Air Force Reserve. So, you know, we've, we've done this in the past. We've had up to four, four officers at one time in the program. So, so yes, difficult covering shifts sometimes when they're on the same weekends. We always deal with that, and deployments, right Jed? So gone for, gone for about a year. So yes, we deal with that, but we also know they're coming back, and they're doing a service for the United States. So appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Just a moment more. If, you probably have been reading in the papers about the industry, or the military having issues in recruiting. Now, I just talked to the Navy about four hours ago, and they seem to be doing okay. It's the Army and the Air Force. And the air, or the military, the National Guard and Reserve are filling in approximately 38% of the active-duty positions. And when I was in the reserve, or the National Guard, our unit was doing pretty much 100% of the Air Force work during the 90s. So it becomes very important that the Guard and Reserve are allowed to leave and yet continue to keep their job when they get back. So thank you. And is there any questions? I left you each a brochure approximately of what we, we are, and website again is www.esgr.mil.
It's on the back, it's on the back of the brochure. Thank you, Mr. Van Daleen, for coming and giving the present, presenting the award. I do know that our staff, our, our police, they work very hard, they're very dedicated, but they're also dedicated to our country. And so it's, it is very nice that we have that opportunity to support them while they're out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Well, that was a nice way to start off the evening, and we will jump right now into the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Just wanted to mention that tonight, we shared the city's budget, the latest version of it. It's almost ready to, to come to the full council, but we shared one that was about 98% done, and walked through that with the Finance Personnel and Risk Management Committee. We want to make an offer to the whole council, to everybody on the council. We're happy to sit down with you, both Kelly Kaufkin, our finance director, and myself, to go through it in a lot more detail, to whatever level folks would like to discuss, leading up to the 26th and certainly throughout the budget process. So we'll follow up with an email, just to provide that opportunity formally, but just wanted to put that out there this evening, and that's my report.
All right. Thank you. And we'll move to council reports. So Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
As our city administrator had mentioned, we did have the Finance Committee meeting, and I want to say thank you to Kelly for putting everything together and reviewing that with us. You did a very good job for an overview, and we are working through it and reviewing it fund by fund. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. And Councilman Lavaca?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Yes.
All right. Thank you. I only have just one announcement, and this is just kind of a, I guess, kind of a public service, but Highway 920, you know, that's been a project that's been ongoing, and it looks like that this Friday, the 14th, they're going to wrap things up. So hopefully that will be concluded and make that movement through that intersection much easier. Moving on to public comments. It is 6:34, and I will open up the floor to public comments. If you would like to give public comment, please give your name and your address, and try to keep it to three minutes. Is there anyone? I'll start with the chamber here. Is there anybody within the chamber who would like to make public comment? Okay, hearing none, I will move then to our Zoom participants. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comment? All right. Seeing none, then I will close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. And it looks like we only have one item tonight, so Mr. Coleman, we are back to the Central Business District design.
All right. Thank you. Ooh, volume really up today. Thank you, Mayor. We're doing another read on the proposed amendments to the Sejuoli Design Standards and Guidelines to address development in the Central Business District. This was a topic that the Planning Commission, that the city council wanted to review, and the Planning Commission reviewed at seven different meetings, including two public hearings on the topic. And these are amendments that would apply to new development in the Central Business District, and so if new buildings were to be built, and it would apply to modifications to existing businesses in the Central Business District. The changes are kind of significant, but not so much in the way that it's applied, but in the, in the details themselves, but more as to where it's applied. We created three separate areas that have more historical significance in the, in the downtown historic area, and in the approach areas on the main streets into the CBD. We have created a separate district where the, the standards are elevated, somewhere, somewhere a little bit above our, what would be our mixed commercial zone standards, and then the areas, outlying areas that aren't major streets, that are maybe residential, having a lower standard of development. So hopefully you had a chance to read through and understand how those areas apply. It mostly applies to roof lines and facade requirements for, for development in each of those areas. And we also created, the Planning Commission has recommended, a creation of a methodology to require and, and allow the city to ask for streetlights, decorative streetlights on Ferry Street in the entrance to the town, much like we have decorative streetlights up and down Metcalf Street. Planning Commission felt it would be a welcoming entrance on Ferry Street coming from Highway 20 down to Metcalf Street if there was also streetlights, decorative streetlights in that area. And you'll see that in most downtown areas, they have decorative streetlights. They debated the area that it should apply to, and that was the, the only corridor that the Planning Commission recommended. Now, they wouldn't be the same streetlights as we have downtown, because those are older, expensive, hard to, hard to retrofit with LED lights, which would be the standard now for any light. But we would, it, it does create the possibility for any development down that area, for the developers to participate in building those streetlights to design standards specified by the city. So those are the, the highlights of the proposed Central Business District Design Standard Updates. The changes necessitated amendments to the Chapter Three of the Design Standard Manual, which is additional standards for the Central Business District, and then the definitions section, so we could define the, a lot of the terms, and architectural terms in particular in the definitions section. So when we say you need to have, for example, I know I'm probably going way too much into the details for you, but, you know, explaining what a shed roof is compared to, you know, a, a normal peaked roof, and just, you know, definitions for what the central, what the three districts are in the Central Business District. And on an entertaining note, we went back and forth between the difference between a muntin and a mullion. Those are features in windows, and we found conflicting information on the internet and in architectural design standards from around the country, and we went back and forth on it and actually became quite an inside joke with the Planning Commission. So if you see a planning commissioner, you can rib them about mullions, and they'll probably get PTSD a little bit, but we had a lot of fun with it. We had a lot of meetings with this, and hopefully this is something along the lines of what the city council was hoping when they asked the Planning Commission to work on this. I can assure you, they put a lot of effort into it, and this is what they, what they recommend.
All right. Thank you, John. Yeah, great job. Great job to the Planning Commission, too. Be sure to thank them for us. I think we all had a chance to do that last Wednesday, but just reiterate that for us, will you? So any questions for John? So this is a third read? Okay, yes? Councilman Lavaca?
I did have a chance to reach out to a lot of the business owners. We never got a flyer to give to them, but I was able just to bring them the, the actual thing. Not, not as many as I'd like to or would have liked to. Some things kind of came up, but I did get some feedback that was interesting, and fortunately, just like the meetings that we have, there's not a lot of public participation, especially with the public meetings. And I think that the public really misses out on that opportunity to weigh in when they don't show up or they don't, they don't participate. And in this case, some of them felt like they found out a little bit late, but we did notify them there was, there was time to throw in comments or come to a meeting and add a public comment. It might have an effect there. I think a lot of them, just to end this out, felt that it was kind of the, the timing, like, the intent is very good, and of course, all the businesses want to do well with their businesses and make it look good, make the city look very appealing to draw in business, because that's what drives them, is profit. It's also the fact that, right now during this economic strain, adding more may push away a possible future business, and we kind of saw that a little bit with the kayak shop, where we were asking to put a road through, and they ended up building their shop and then having a business success story for themselves, but in a different community. And we just don't, I don't know that we, you know, we don't want to miss those opportunities by, by adding restrictions at a tight time in our economy. So that was my only input on that. I thank you for all the hard work. I know it's been a lot, and as you said, the, the council had asked to have that done a while back. I believe there was one major business change during COVID that drove a lot of it, and it was their need to survive, or with their, their intent of need to survive, they felt, was, was there, but it drove a lot of the, the desire to put some parameters in place. So, and people understood that. Thanks, John.
Thank you. So this is the third read. If there are no more comments or discussion, I am looking for a motion. This will be to approve Ordinance 201722, adopting amendments to the Sejuoli Design Standards and Guidelines.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2017-22.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie, and it is a motion to approve Ordinance 201722. It is adopting amendments to the Sejuoli Design Standards and Guidelines. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Mr. Lavaca?
That's correct. Thank you.
Was that an a? Mr. Lavaca?
That was correct.
All right.
That was correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So we have four who were for it and one who did not approve of the design, so, or the motion. Okay, so, but it does pass. We do not have any new business, and I'm trusting that you got to see the information, which was from the Fire Department. If there's nothing for the good of the order, we are going to adjourn. And for the council's information, like I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we are, after the closing of this meeting, going into closed session, and Chief Wagner will be joining us. All right. Thank you.